Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por venir y bienvenidos al foro de votos del Club San Marino del Consejo de Ciudad. Mi nombre es Stephen Choi y tengo la honor de servir como vicepresidente de la ciudadanía del Club San Marino para las Asuntos Civiles y Publicitarios. Durante más de 100 años, el Club San Marino ha prosperado como organización de la comunidad donde nuestra misión es proteger a los ciudadanos del Distrito Municipal de la Universidad San Marino con mejores servicios civiles, educativos y culturales en el centro de la ciudad. El Club San Marino es el principal organismo de nuestro anual interminable mientras que ofrecemos los estables de los discursos. Creamos oportunidades para que los miembros se unan y compartan una cena con sus ciudadanos y oficiales escolares para discutir lo que es importante para nuestra comunidad. También nos patrocina eventos como la fiesta de verano de Brian, el viernes 4 de julio de VIP TV y la cena de octubre de la Club China de San Marino en el Huntington Center, que se está presentando muy pronto. El Club San Marino también se involucra generosamente con nuestras escuelas, grupos civiles y también con organizaciones locales. El Club San Marino también continúa organizando el virtual City Talk para reunir a los miembros y no miembros del Club San Marino. Gracias a todos aquellos que continúan apoyándonos. Si aún no han unido al Club San Marino, pueden solicitar su asistencia en nuestra página web o contactar a cualquiera de nuestros oficiales del Club San Marino y nos encantaría recibirlos como invitados en nuestra cena. Mientras observo hoy, es increíble lo que ha cambiado desde el último foro que organizamos hace dos años. Los candidatos estaban sentados a 20 metros de distancia y podían comunicarse solo a través de un ordenador. A pesar de todas las dificultades que enfrentamos en la pandemia, el deseo de conectarnos a nuestra comunidad sigue permaneciendo. Quiero agradecer a todos los candidatos de esta noche por participar. También quiero reconocer a mis compañeros de la ciudadanía del Club San Marino que realmente hicieron mucho trabajo detrás de ellos. Así que, miembros del Consejo de Ciudad del Club San Marino, por favor, sean reconocidos. Los miembros del Consejo de Ciudad del Club San Marino también ayudaron a recoger cualquier tarjeta de votación de esta noche, así que si tienen una pregunta, por favor, escribanlas en estas tarjetas azules y nos van a recoger. También quiero agradecer a nuestro audiencia por venir esta noche. Ahora, reconozco que tengo que ponerme un gorro y un traje hoy en este extremo golpe de calor, pero es muy claro que no hay nada que se sienta en persona. Así que, en cuanto a poner un gorro y un traje, quiero contribuir a nuestro moderador esta noche. El Sr. Mitch Lehman es el editor del Trunio de San Marino y ha ganado más de 20 premios de la Asociación de Los Libros de Unidad de California por cobertura excepcional de deportes, educación, civiles y escritura. Recientemente, Mitch recibió el Premio Golding de la Asociación de Los Libros de California por sus contribuciones en la cobertura del Distrito Municipal de la Universidad San Marino. En marzo, Mitch fue inducido en la Halla de la Fama en su hogar, la Edina High School de Ohio. Mitch también es anuncianta de muchos de los programas atleticos de las escuelas, como la boxeada, voleibol, futbol, baloncesto, béisbol y softball. Y justo la semana pasada, Mitch fue el orador de la cena de deportes del Club San Marino en el Loma del Sol. Por favor, bienvened a la moderadora muy elegante y bastante dábela, el Sr. Mitch Lehman.
Gracias, Stephen. Recuerdo ese foro de candidatos y recuerdo, ironicamente, que los candidatos querían estar a 30 metros de ellos, no solo a 20 metros de ellos. Quiero decir, mi madre falleció hace un par de años y ella amaba que anunciara todos esos juegos porque me dijo que finalmente pude devolver el dinero por estar en televisión viendo todos los deportes de toda mi vida. Así que, muchas gracias, lo aprecio. Bienvenidos al foro de candidatos de 2022. Me encanta estar aquí, realmente disfruté de cuando tuvimos el Huntington Library también porque no hacíamos muchas cosas en persona en ese momento. Gracias por venir. Tenemos algunos dignitarios, probablemente me olvidé de algunos. Ken Udy es aquí, ¿dónde está Ken? El señor de la ciudadanía del Club San Marino. Susan Jacobowski. Y no se lo digo, parece mucho más tranquilo cuando están viendo. Y están tan relajados, Ken parece que va a jugar nueve horas de golf o algo así. Joseph Chang es aquí, ¿dónde está Joseph? Shelley Ryan, ¿él es el que está aquí? Alguien se mira en la otra parte de la sala. Alguien tiene una mano arriba, ¿quién es eso? Steve, ¿es James Chan? Hola, James. No lo vi, pero escuché a Steve Talk, creo. ¿Cierto? Ahí vamos, gracias, Stephen. Y alguien está señalando ahí, ¿a quién le está señalando? Steven Ryan. Steven Ryan, muchas gracias. ¿Alguien más? ¿Y quién? El ciudadano, ahí vamos, el ciudadano es aquí, muy bien. Nuestro jefe de policía es aquí, arrogant Sierra Madre. John Contrac. Y el director de su nombre, el encargado que circula todo el tiempo. Y nuestro jefe de policía es aquí, Mario Rueda. Gracias, Stephen, gracias por venir. Y gracias al Consejo de Ciudad de San Marino por su hospitalidad. Y gracias, un agradecimiento especial a los seis candidatos que están aquí esta noche. Digo algo así cada vez que hay un foro de voto, pero gracias por poner sus nombres en la lista y correr por el cargo. En este caso específico, una asistencia a la ciudadanía del Club San Marino. Es una de las formas más altas de participación de la comunidad que es posible. Muchos, si no la mayoría de la gente en el estado, les gusta complain sobre la forma en que las cosas son manejadas, pero muy pocos de ellos están dispuestos a ir por el cargo y realmente manejar las cosas. No habrá perdedores el 8 de noviembre. Gracias por su voluntad de participar en el gobierno local. Ahora, vamos a empezar. Así que vamos a tener una declaración de abertura de dos minutos. Los candidatos serán advertidos cuando lleguen al límite de dos minutos y vamos a ir en el orden de cómo se acercan. Así que nuestros candidatos se acercaron de este orden, uno hasta seis. Y comenzaremos con el número uno, Grant Fujiwara, en dos minutos su declaración de abertura.
Hola y buenas tardes. Primero, me gustaría agradecer a todos por tomarse el tiempo esta noche y pasar el tiempo con nosotros. También quiero agradecer al moderador y al Club San Marino por organizar este evento. Es mi esperanza que se discuten aquí esta noche que ustedes entiendan que las palabras están en los temas para hacer San Marino un lugar fuerte y seguro. De nuevo, gracias.
La asistencia número dos, Tony Cho.
Soy residente de San Marino y un nuevo padre. Estoy orgulloso de ser el padre de mi familia en mi pueblo. Estoy corriendo porque he tenido el privilegio de experimentar los beneficios de esta comunidad y todo lo que ofrece. Y quiero asegurarme de que mantenemos y mejoramos esto y mantengamos este impacto en el área. Creo que podemos hacer esto siendo proactivos. Al nutrir cada experiencia individual y sentido de propiedad, podemos aumentar la responsabilidad y la seguridad. Al agregar voces a la conversación y usando las palabras "y" en lugar de "o", abriremos canales de conversación real. Y finalmente, plantear sensibilizadamente y mejorar la experiencia de usuario solo llevará valor a largo plazo para los residentes, propietarios de negocios y ciudadanos. Soy joven, pero he estado aquí toda mi vida. He sido entrenador de voleibol aquí durante 12 años, futurista de 8 años, he servido en la Club China para cinco años como presidente y presidente de las escuelas y actualmente estoy en mi tercer año en el Comité de Derechos Humanos. Todas estas experiencias me han proporcionado ideas únicas y profetas sobre la ciudad. Así que puedo comprender el pasado y el presente, lo cual creo que es realmente vital para cualquiera que represente a la ciudad en el futuro. Gracias.
Gracias, Tony, y la asistencia número tres, Stephen Jones.
Gracias, mi nombre es Stephen Jones. Para aquellos de ustedes que no me conocen, que probablemente sea la mayoría de ustedes, soy residente de la ciudad de San Marino. Me mudé aquí el año pasado, soy nativo de la ciudad de Nueva York. He sido educado, he tenido una ubicación financiera en la ciudad. La primera parte de mi carrera fue dedicada a 23 años como trader de bonos. Diez de esos años en Wall Street y luego me reubicé en Los Ángeles en 1999 con préstamos de casa a nivel nacional y administré un portfolio de 125 billones de dólares de activos basados en la ciudad. Mi último año en la banca trabajé con el banco Federal Reserve en Boston. Trabajé en la Ley de Dodd-Frank y trabajé en el banco de la ciudad. En 2011, hice un cambio de carrera y obtuve mi licencia de contrato, licencia de real estate y persiguió mi segunda vida de pasión y eso es renovaciones de hogares, propiedades históricas, desarrollo y real estate. Soy un pastel histórico y eso fue lo que me llevó a esa carrera. Comencé mi propio negocio de construcción y tuve el privilegio de vivir en algunas ciudades muy bonitas aquí en la ciudad de LA County, más notablemente Pasadena Burbank. Y me mudé a San Marino debido a su belleza natural, los hogares históricos, la seguridad de los vecinos. Creo que no hay duda de que San Marino es uno de los lugares más bonitos de la ciudad de LA County y creo que lo concuerdo. Decidí ir al Consejo de Ciudad debido a estas tres cosas que son muy importantes para mí. Lo más importante es mantener la seguridad pública de nuestros residentes, nuestros hogares y nuestros negocios primero. Hemos experimentado una escalación en el crimen y creo que trabajar con el gobierno local, los programas de vigilancia local para asegurar la seguridad y la seguridad de nuestros residentes. Segundo, lo que es importante para mí es trabajar con el Comité de Derechos Humanos y la Comisión de Planificación para streamlar el proceso para los propietarios, actualizar y renovar sus hogares sin sacrificar el nature beauty de las propiedades. Y tercero, trabajar con los trabajos públicos para mantener nuestras calles, costillas y partes públicas limpias y ricas asegurando que no tengamos algunos de los problemas que nuestros vecinos de las ciudades están teniendo que experimentar con la publicidad. Gracias.
Gracias, Stephen, es redondo, redondo, sin límites. Quiero asegurarme de pronunciar correctamente el nombre del siguiente candidato y es Sue, ¿cierto? Viswanathan, díselo por favor.
Navan.
Viswanathan, muy bien, gracias. Te daremos más tiempo si llegas a tus dos minutos para tu declaración de abertura.
Gracias.
Sue, gracias.
Gracias al Club San Marino por organizar el foro de candidatos y al Distrito Municipal de la Universidad San Marino por permitirnos estar en el auditorio de la escuela Huntington esta noche. Mi nombre es Sue Viswanathan. Mi familia y yo hemos vivido en nuestro hogar durante 21 años. Como niño, asistí a Parker, Huntington Junior High y San Marino High School junto con mis dos hermanas mayores que graduaron de allí. De las cuatro hijas de nuestra familia, tres de nosotras regresaron a San Marino y compraron casas aquí. Puedes decir que tengo raíces profundas en San Marino. La razón por la que corro para el Consejo de Ciudad es porque tengo el conocimiento y las habilidades para convertir en líder eficaz en San Marino. Mi experiencia en proyectos y gestión de programas. He desarrollado regulaciones de calidad para la Agencia de Protección Ambiental, tanto estatal como federal. Lo que esto significa es que he trabajado con los interesados, las industrias de la energía automotriz y la energía limpia, y he llegado a soluciones basadas en técnicas workable. Entiendo cómo el gobierno puede lograr cosas buenas. Además, he trabajado en la industria privada, en Accenture y en startups. He trabajado en Kaiser Permanente, Venture Capital Group, donde desarrollamos plataformas de coaching de salud para aquellos con problemas de salud a largo plazo y la población anciana. Entiendo la importancia de la participación. He gestionado presupuestos y personas. Sé cómo llevar proyectos a la completación y a la éxito. Además, soy un activo miembro y voluntario escolar. He sido premiado un oro en la cuna en Parker y he sido activo en el Consejo Ejecutivo de la PTA y non-profits como Partnership Pro-Awareness y presidenta de la Proa Library Foundation Board. Tengo un MBA de la USC y un máster de bioquímica de la UC Riverside. Mis habilidades incluyen la participación en la comunidad, gestión de presupuestos y tengo habilidades de comunicación para interactuar y trabajar con las comunidades Matrix. No importa de dónde vengamos, todos somos San Marinenses. Gracias.
Este candidato en el cinco jefe es Gretchen Shepherd-Ronnie Griffin. Quería presentarle que era un actual miembro del Consejo de Ciudad y luego de repente me di cuenta de que iba a estar aquí. Gretchen Shepherd-Ronnie.
Gracias a todos y gracias al Consejo de Ciudad así como al Consejo de la Escuela, a los ciudadanos de San Marino por permitirnos venir esta noche así como a nuestro moderador Mitch Lehman. Ha sido mi honor servir en el Consejo de Ciudad durante los últimos cinco años y la decisión de correr por la elección es importante y tomó tiempo y un análisis thoughtful pero creo que tengo las habilidades y experiencia y conocimientos que he ganado como residente de 26 años aquí además de los cinco años en el Consejo de la Escuela y he sido activo en grupos de comunidad y continúo el compromiso de preservar y proteger nuestra ciudad hermosa y única para el futuro. Y sentado en el Consejo de Ciudad, quería considerar lo que significaba tener un Consejo de Ciudad exitoso y mejorar la vida de los residentes. Y para mí, eso significaba que necesitábamos mantener nuestra comunidad segura, bien mantenida, tan hermosa como es aquí y animar eventos de comunidad que compartamos con nuestros vecinos y los otros residentes así como actividades y eventos y hacerles y nuestras familias felices para que quisiéramos quedarnos aquí, traer gente aquí y esperemos que nuestras familias o personas que crecieron aquí regresen aquí. Así que esas son mis prioridades y creo que el Consejo de Ciudad es sobre servicio, liderazgo honesto, tener un compromiso con esas cosas y un diálogo público significativo sobre decisiones importantes. Creo que tenemos que defender y ser thoughtful por las deseo de los residentes y también aplicar un gran número de sentido común y crédito financiero cuando tomamos decisiones para gastar fondos de contribuyentes. He trabajado duro durante los últimos cinco años y he cumplido con la confianza. Y ustedes saben que soy honesto y financiamente responsable y traeré lo mejor que puedo para el futuro de San Marino. Gracias.
Gracias, Mitch Lehman, muy bien. ¿Habías preguntado si íbamos a correr, verdad? Estoy seguro que sí. Y... Lo siento.
Y creo que cada semana antes.
Estoy seguro que sí, exacto, fue un largo proceso. Y la última, no, Liz, Calvin Love.
Buenas tardes, amigos y vecinos, soy Calvin Love. Hace 15 años, mi familia y yo nos mudamos a esta hermosa ciudad y comenzamos nuestra historia de San Marino, construyendo nuestra carrera y criando a los niños. Muchos de ustedes vinieron aquí hoy o eligieron esta hermosa ciudad de los más de 700 años que hemos vivido. Seguridad, vecindario, arquitectura hermosa y medioambiente, escuelas de primer grado y, encima de todo, un lugar con un fuerte sentido de comunidad. San Marino cubrió todos esos rasgos para todos nosotros y más. Durante los años, he tenido la honor de mostrar mi pasión por nuestra ciudad al voluntariar en numerosos consejos, comités y fuerzas tributarias. En esas experiencias, he demostrado la voluntad de cooperar con los colegas para obtener las cosas bien. Escuché a otros, ofrecer soluciones sensibles y tratar de proporcionar un juicio razonable para el bien de la comunidad. Como resultado, he hecho muchos buenos amigos en la ciudad. Y mis hijos, los beneficiarios de la hermosa comunidad de San Marino. Fueron por el entero sistema escolar de San Marino y ahora todos persiguen sus sueños en la universidad. Son nuestros productos, nuestros productos de San Marino. Y ellos me inspiraron a servir en el Consejo. Quiero preservar el valor núcleo de nuestra ciudad y investir en su crecimiento para que remaina un lugar seguro, viva y place para los residentes actuales y para nuestras futuras generaciones. Mi pleno es escuchar y trabajar duro por el beneficio de todos nuestros residentes para asegurar que San Marino remaina un lugar seguro, bien dirigido, de primer grado. Porque cuando mis hijos comenzaron a buscar el lugar perfecto para criar a sus familias, quería empezar con San Marino primero. Bueno, no estoy diciendo que no debamos explorar el mundo, pero como Dorothy me recordó en el Cuzabat, no hay lugar como el hogar y no hay lugar como San Marino. Muchas gracias.
Bien, ahora este es el programa, así que se sientan cómodos. Vamos a hacer una serie de seis preguntas que responderán todos los seis candidatos en orden. Sus respuestas girarán cuando todos tengan el mismo orden de respuestas a las preguntas. Esto tomará un par de minutos. ¿Y cuánto tiempo tiene cada pregunta? ¿Un minuto de respuesta, dos minutos? Uno minuto de respuesta. Bien, vamos a hacer la primera ronda directa en el mismo orden, uno hasta seis. Así que vamos a empezar con la pregunta número uno. Grant Fujiwara, Grant, la fe de la localidad de la escuela de Stone was put on the back burner until the future of the San Marino Center was determined. ¿Cuál es tu plan para la escuela de Stone? Y repetiré cualquier pregunta que use.
Bueno, definitivamente creo que Stone ha sido una gran escuela. Mi hermano y hermana estaban en esta escuela, desafortunadamente no. Y porque Stone ha sido cerrado durante más de 40 años, yo diría que soy un gran partidario del Distrito Municipal de la Universidad San Marino y me gustaría ver, pero también me gustaría ver el uso eficiente del presupuesto para el sistema escolar. Eso dicho, tendríamos que ver, si yo estuviera en el Consejo de Ciudad, lo único que tendríamos que hacer es ver el presupuesto de lo que está disponible para todas las escuelas y ver qué queda para Stone.
Gracias, Grant. También, como vieron, Stephen Choi y Isaac Collins estarán enfadados. No están buscando niños perdidos. Así que si ustedes quieren llenar las tarjetas y hacer preguntas a los candidatos, si tenemos tiempo para hacer eso más tarde, por favor, bajen y llenen las preguntas para ellos. Tony, tu segundo, Tony Cho. Así que puedes tener un extra de 30 segundos en una de las preguntas y Tony está jugando su tarjeta de 30 segundos justo desde atrás.
Bien, sí, para responder la pregunta, creo que lo que todos sabemos es que va a ser una obligación. Hay muchos problemas, se está subiendo a la grada. Honestamente, en realidad traté de resolver este problema cuando era parte de la Club China. Lo usamos para los actividades de verano y uno de mis impulsos fue en realidad hacer una asociación, potencialmente, ya que en ese momento pensábamos, tal vez la escuela china, la escuela preescolar, colaborando con la ciudad, trabajando juntos, desahuciando una gran parte de esa obligación y depósito operacional a alguien más. Ese es un ejemplo de algo que voy a hacer para Stone. Creo que no es solo cero o uno. No es un activo de deuda y no va a ser reparado de la noche a la mañana. Creo que mi enfoque si yo estaba en la ciudad sería vamos a buscar compañeros técnicos, si están en las ciudades o externos y que ellos trabajen con nosotros, hagan el trabajo y entonces la gente tendrá una oportunidad de compartir o algo así. Gracias.
Gracias. Stephen Jones.
Así que esto ha sido un tema muy largo, supongo que todavía es. Así que sé que hay mucha preservación histórica en la escuela de Stone y nunca podría evitar tener el edificio destruido. Dicho eso, sé que ha sido una obligación para la ciudad y creo que hay otro uso que podría ser usado, posiblemente un centro de rehabilitación pública. Pero también siendo un empresario, también soy consciente del presupuesto y tienes que tener un tipo de activo de rendimiento para estar en la lista de balance. Así que solo tener esta escuela de Stone vacía y inutilizada no es en el mejor interés de ningún居民. Así que me gusta la idea de Tony, creo que definitivamente estaría de acuerdo con eso buscando tal vez una asociación para poner Stone de nuevo en uso. Pero creo que hay una tremenda historia en ese edificio, creo que necesita ser utilizado y creo que hay muchas oportunidades para nosotros para discutir lo que queremos hacer con él, pero creo que un centro de rehabilitación pública podría ser posiblemente algo bueno para la comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias, Stephen, Sue.
Hay muy pocos activos que la ciudad posee y Stone es uno de ellos. Y ha tenido tanta importancia en nuestra historia de San Marino, siendo formalmente una escuela, pero además de eso, el informe de recursos históricos que fue publicado poco antes de nuestros cierres identificó algunos aspectos históricos de Stone. Así que hay muchos pensamientos en este asunto, habiendo hablado con muchas, muchas personas en nuestra comunidad, dentro de nuestra ciudad y aquellos que son muy activos. Tienen muchas soluciones. Creo que la primera cosa que hacer es crear una comisión de fact finding de tronco azul en la que habría representantes de las diversas comisiones que tenemos actualmente, como el plan y la seguridad. Y eso debe ser hecho a corto plazo, probablemente y claramente después de la elección para que podamos determinar la mejor opción.
Gracias, Sue. Así que si quieren jugar sus últimos 30 segundos, ¿pueden lanzar su tarjeta? Porque están mirando. Antes de la pregunta, bien.
¿Cuántas veces, solo una vez?
Una vez. Gretchen, no, usted está esperando que haga algo, está esperando que lanza sus 30 segundos más tarde, ¿cierto? Gretchen Shepherd-Ronnie.
Bien, primero quiero aclarar que no soy involucrada en el real estate de ninguna manera, excepto viviendo en mi casa aquí en San Marino durante los últimos 26 años. Así que no tengo nada más que un enfoque completamente despierto e objetivo a lo que vamos a hacer con Stone. Creo que empezar tiene que ser con nuestros residentes y los residentes de San Marino deben determinar, no en Sacramento, no en consultores externos y creo, o desarrolladores por ese asunto. Así que me gustaría ver si consideramos foros con la comunidad y algunos recopilamiento de datos a costa. Si recuerdo correctamente, en 2014 y 2016, y creo que nuestros miembros anteriores del Consejo, teníamos votos de entre cuatro y nueve para sacarlo. Pero eso es casi diez años atrás. Así que tenemos que realmente considerar el costo que se involucrará y cuál es el propósito ultimate, si es un centro de rehabilitación, si es parcialmente usado, una porción histórica de tiempo y luego el otro uso para algo más, tal vez otra entidad de la ciudad como el Departamento de Policía o otra entidad.
Tiene el "spouse" en there, lo siento. Creo que deberíamos dejar que use el tarjeta de 30 segundos después. Solo juego. Bien, Calvin Love, ¿quieres los últimos 30 segundos? Calvin, espera 9 segundos para responder.
Bien, así que por Stone, este es el mayor, obviamente, el que la ciudad tiene. Insisto en la mayor inversión posible al explorar y evaluar las opciones a través de los inputs de la comunidad o también trabajar con otros para tiendas de retail, restaurantes, con escuelas, con centros de residencia o incluso vendiéndolo a un precio muy alto. Pero todas estas opciones tienen que ser combinadas con una investigación financiera general con el costo de las reparaciones y renovaciones para determinar las mejores opciones que hacen más sentido para nuestra comunidad. Pero, por supuesto, como administrador de real estate profesional así como preservador, me gustaría mantener el propietario en posesión de la ciudad si es posible y usarlo para beneficiar a la comunidad. Después de todo, el propietario de la real estate es siempre la mejor inversión que puede ser utilizada en un momento. Gracias.
Gracias, Calvin. Bien, y vamos a hacer la segunda, tercera, entonces vamos a la segunda ronda. Grant, remindme porque tendré tendencia a terminar esto cuando Calvin esté listo. Vamos a volver a usted para la respuesta final aquí. Así que la pregunta número dos, comenzamos con Tony Cho y la pregunta es: Después del comienzo de la pandemia, el Consejo de Ciudad de San Marino pidió que se requerieran vacunas de COVID mandatory para todos sus empleados. Si fuera elegido, ¿ solicitaría una discusión para revisar esa decisión o apoyaría continuar la política? Tony.
Si fuera elegido, en respuesta a la respuesta, creo que volveríamos a la discusión. Scenarios, tiempos son diferentes, las situaciones en las que la gente está, la comprensión de la ciencia es todo diferente ahora. No es decir que podamos cambiarlo, pero creo, como mencioné anteriormente, debería ser igual. Debemos tener una discusión para determinar la mejor solución para eso.
Gracias, Stephen.
Así que voy a empezar diciendo que he sido vacunado y un booster, pero por otra parte, respeto la libertad de elección. Creo que si yo fuera, o sé que si fuera elegido, certamente defendería la abertura de la conversación para revisar esa política de vacuna mandatory, absolutamente sí.
Gracias, Sue.
Creo que hay mucho más información que sabemos ahora que lo hacíamos hace 20 meses. Y creo que definitivamente necesitamos abrir la discusión solo para que podamos pasar por esa información que ahora está disponible. Sabemos ahora que hay una mayor... Muchos de nosotros hemos tenido COVID, hay el efecto de la inmunidad natural que ha penetrado en nuestra población, los efectos secundarios a las vacunas. Hay mucho más información que necesitamos pasar por y creo que esa discusión necesita ser abierta. Soy de acuerdo con todas las decisiones personales de todos, pero al mismo tiempo necesitamos abordar lo que es mejor para el bien.
Gracias, Gretchen. Thank you. Gretchen.
I was part of the decision-making when we first decided. And I wanted to give everybody a bit of history. We were in the throes of dealing with COVID as people were not yet able to have adequate vaccines. We didn't know what we were dealing with. And we also have a number of people in our community that were very young, our children, and still to this day, the youngest of our community, as well as immunocompromised people in our town, of which we have many cancer survivors and other residents. And it was important that we knew that our police and fire, as well as residents that provide services across the board, were immunized and safe as highly as we could determine at that time. And I believe since some employees departed because of that decision, it would not be wise to have us revisit a policy that we adopted until we clearly are past the pandemic and no longer have central cases in our community.
Thank you. Calvin.
Yes, so myself is fully vaccinated and booster. But I do respect the freedom of choice of, for their own reasons, not to get vaccinated. But I understand why I also made the decision when the COVID pandemic, because our town, we have a large population of seniors and students and kids. So for their safety, of course, through the discussion of the entire community, input of the entire community, that was the best decision made at the time. So when I'm elected, of course, I will take a look of the situation with the current COVID. And I do feel the safety of the entire, the public safety of our communities was a major, major, the most important issue. So I will, you know, of course, we revisited the issue. But again, I think I also support the input decision.
Thank you, Calvin. Finish the question with Grant.
I believe the question is very much clear cut. I would give everybody a choice to get the vaccination or not. That being said, I would also need it to be more open for discussion by the group to see if, if the majority feel like they feel severely uncomfortable not having or being with non-vaccinated people. And but of course, I would go with my workarounds to that. But I would still give it as a choice to the individual if they want to get vaccinated or not.
Thank you, Grant. Moving on to Stephen for question number three. A year and a half ago, the San Marino City Council rejected Starbucks' superstore on Huntington Drive because it included a drive-through element. Do you agree with this decision? Or as a member of the city council, would you favor altering existing codes to allow for similar projects? Stephen.
I'm an advocate, being a businessman, I'm an advocate of business. I think a lot of Huntington Drive, I mean, is very vacant. I think to have a vibrant thriving economy, attracting local businesses is very important. I'm not an advocate of many large chain stores. I do love my Starbucks, so I'm glad we have one in town. I don't know that we would need it to, but I know the other one that exists today would run away. But having said that, I do think that trying to create more local businesses in San Marino is important. I think that we need to look to maybe offer incentives to businesses because I think that really, you know, creates a growing problem for all these people.
Thank you. Sue.
I think as a resident, we need to encourage businesses to want to come and serve our community. But we need to encourage the right businesses that fit our community and fit what we would like to see here. It's clear that the Economic Development Team did a terrific job. And they, and you look at the Mission District, you can see a vignette of the type of community that San Marino residents would like to have, a place to go have some coffee, to eat, and to meet our neighbors. And I think these are the kind of places that we do, we need to encourage and grow within our community, where we can come in and meet with our community, meet with our family and our friends, and be able to eat and dine. A Starbucks may not fit that bill with a drive-through. That really doesn't fit our community, what we'd like to see here. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen.
Thank you. I think that we discussed it thoroughly. There were a lot of issues on the table. We definitely would like to see that spot renting and thriving business. So that was motivating for us to take this very seriously, the offer. But I think the drive-through component was a stumbling block for the decision to ultimately go through, to make an exception for one location or one potential commercial establishment. When we don't have drive-throughs now in our city, we try not to because there are a lot of public safety implications, particularly on a corner location that is backing up to a neighborhood. It was unclear given how it would even fit there with the drive-through entrance and exit and the amount of schoolchildren that go by there, walking, driving on the way to school and back. So there were a lot of problems with that particular location. But I think fundamentally, the community does not want drive-throughs and would rather see, as Sue said, establishments that come to town that have parked and serve our community as best we can. And I think we can get somebody else in that location.
Thank you. Aren't you glad that I didn't have a thirty-extra-second card when I was speaking at the city club last week? Probably a good idea. Calvin.
So I understand, because the Starbucks project, they worked with the drive-through. But beyond that, I'm most in support of our, supporting our local businesses. The city currently has about six hundred businesses, eight hundred eighty stores for us. But I think we should further develop a plan to promote local business and then attract the business, the type of business that fits our town. And another point I mean, restaurants, RBRs, or even antique stores, so we can promote in-town shopping and supporting local business community. So and this will actually, like everybody agrees, this will further bind the community together and also increase sales tax revenue for the state. Thank you.
Grant.
Yes, again, this is actually an issue that's pretty neat to cut. Given the location on Huntington Drive and how the traffic flows through Huntington Drive being a major artery in Los Angeles, we definitely do not, would like to see a drive-through that's going to cause a kind of congestion that's, say, in and out causing Garfield Boulevard. I am a supporter of small businesses. I believe that the strength that we build from our communities is ones that we build ourselves. But I also feel that, yes, large, large commercial properties, we like to see them built too. So if another large corporation were willing to take that spot where a small business could not, I would be, I would be very much like to develop with them. But of course, in this case, definitely in this case, not a drive-through.
Thank you. Tony, I saw you turn your page to your Starbucks. I was going to check the balance on your Starbucks gift card.
Tony Cho. That's a good way to begin, I mean. So I think with Starbucks, it's really your framework on how you view it. The way I would view it, to be honest, is amenity to the residents. I would say that's my framework everything added. So yes, the drive-through was a give, but we had a lot of takes. And I would say that ninety percent of it might have been taken. We have in our budget annual increases in sales tax, one and a half percent. Annual increases in property tax, five percent. If you don't provide amenities to people, you know, you can't really bank on the fact that these things are just naturally going to progress. We're going to always have this income. So the way I look at it is not so much as a corporation, but that that space is kind of vacant and that we're providing an amenity to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, you started the special, I believe, right? And we move on to Sue. Sue. On the same ballot as the city council election, will appear a proposed vacancy tax that will be determined by voters. Are you willing to reveal if you will vote for or against this tax? And do you feel, excuse me, do you feel it will accomplish the stated GAAP goal of reducing the number of vacant homes?
I understand the larger concept of the vacancy tax. And to be frank, I'm still trying to learn what the ultimate details of that tax is about and how it would affect our residents and how it would benefit our residents. So at this time, I can't reveal to you one way or another because I haven't made up my mind concerning the tax. But I think our city council and our city managers have done their due diligence in determining how it would affect us, how it would affect the vacant homes and what that impact would be. So with that said, I will say I am on pause on that decision.
Thank you. Gretchen.
I would vote for it. And I think I wrote the, with the assistance of another council member, wrote the argument in favor of it. Because I think that vacant homes are negative for our community in a lot of ways. Obviously, the most dangerous is that it has led to an increased crime, whether it's people who've used those homes to hurt the rise or commit crimes within our community, as well as vacant renters, squatters. We found as well, even families with young children living illegally in vacant homes. I also think there's a great deal of concern about having those homes next to you for long periods of time because it threatens your security. You don't have a neighbor who you can have a relationship with, who watches your house when you go away, et cetera. It also threatens our limits, impacts our schools negatively. So there are a lot of very important reasons that I think the community should get behind if they think about it, by the vacancy tax. And this is an effort to bring our town, support people, and that would benefit.
Gretchen, is it funny and competent to say stuff like when I wrote the ballot?
Well, it's all there, so.
Absolutely. You earned the rights. Calvin.
So for me, the purpose of the criminal law and code is not to punish, but to prevent harm and protect and for ensure general welfare. Vacant homes is an issue for neighborhood safety. And actually, one of the worst things that you can do to a property is actually to leave it unattended or vacant for a long time. I've had an example, actually, your friend's house, a $500, it could be a $500 or other, I mean, buyer's income damage. Then it becomes a $150,000 flood issue because they were not home for months. So I do, I'm in support of the message that we should not have many homes left free and unattended in our town for a long time. And but vacancy tax will need a two-thirds approval of the voters. So if passed, city will need to conduct a thorough community outreach and communication to the residents to ensure there's no confusion for the implementation. Thank you.
Grant.
This is more of a complicated issue. Because on one side, no, I don't want to raise any taxes on families or citizens or retirees because we are, we are in a recession and we are, there is high inflation. But I do believe if the principle is helped by a corporate body, then by all means, we should allow to levy taxes against corporations holding the property open, residential and commercial. Let's remove it.
Tony.
Yeah, regarding the vacancy tax, I think it's unfortunate. It's in front of us. This is something I might want to address with sense of ownership here. I think there's another way of approaching it. But obviously, with what's in front of us, I think implementing something like this would make sense. I think we also have to dig a little deeper on qualifiers. I think there's going to be a lot of gray in this issue, and that probably has to be further discussed.
Stephen.
I might use it a time now, but I'm going to go.
Stephen's pulling the extra thirty-second card.
Yes, thirty-two. So much like Sue, there's a lot of information in the vacancy tax that I'm not quite familiar with. So at this point in time, I'm not an advocate of the tax. I think, I don't know how you possibly begin to monitor how, you know, how many days somebody is actually living in the residence. I think if it's left up to neighbors calling for enforcement or possibly empowering neighbors to turn on other neighbors because they feel the house is vacant, it begins to get a little sloppy, a little messy. So I think enforcement, in my mind, would be a very complicated process. I think the tax which was initially proposed at $6,000 per parcel went up to $10,000 per parcel, I think it's quite egregious. To Grant's point, you know, we're in a recessionary environment. Inflation is very high. Levying those taxes on single-family properties and homeowners, I think, is going to be very burdensome. And with regard to levying that tax on businesses, I think instead of penalizing businesses that leave their storefronts empty, I think we should be working to lift these businesses up and get these storefronts filled, again, contributing to local economy. So I'm really not an advocate of all of the vacancy taxes at this point in time.
Thank you. You know, Marcel, I happen to know a guy at the local newspaper. We might have him write something about the vacancy taxes, explain a little bit better so nobody's saying they don't understand this well. Believe me, I don't either. Are we done with that question, I believe, right? So we're to Gretchen? Okay. Gretchen. Is that right? Sue. You started, right? Yeah, you started. So now we go to Gretchen. Gretchen is number six. Gretchen's going to answer this question as well. Five? You're five?
This is the fifth question.
Five. It's right there. Five. Going to it. Yeah, thank you. You're going to start this with, well, when I wrote this bill last year. The state of California has identified an existing shortage of housing stock which is reflected in the housing elements that must be submitted by each city. SB nine was recently signed into law that allows homeowners to split lots and construct additional dwellings. As a member of the San Marino City Council, do you want to, and I mean that citizen for you, as a member of the San Marino City Council, do you want to continue the fight towards San Marino maintaining a city or family identity or move to incorporate different types of housing and commercial activities? Gretchen.
Thank you, Mitch. I'm going to play my extra thirty-second card. This is a big issue for our community, and it will fundamentally change our single-family neighborhoods that we now currently reside in. We are required, and there are certain aspects, plenty of them, that are state mandates. So we have to allow, obviously, lot splits, and all those lot splits up to two additional units. One has to be lived in, but that is done for three years by the owner. But there's more complicating things in that we also are tasked with the housing element, updating it this year, and coming up with 397 more housing units, the potential buildup in our city. And so those can be by rezonings from areas that now have single-family residents to be multifamily. It also may be rezoning and allowing alternative use or revised use of existing commercial spaces that might be empty and underutilized. So there are a number of things that we're dealing with under this one blanket, which is Senate bills nine and 10. And it's going to take a lot of careful consideration as to how we go about coming up with space for those units that we're required to provide potential building. And that should be a community endeavor, I believe, that we consult, we put together, we've been working on, and staff has as well, city council now, for I think close to two years, and we still have further work to do. So I hope we get the community involved on that.
Thank you. Calvin.
Yes, so the city actually is facing a challenge by this SB nine, SB thirty-five. And also, as Gretchen mentioned, the plans by HDB and we, we are actually short about 397 total housings. As I understand, 149 of them has to be qualified for very low-income housing, and 91 is below-income housing. So I know CDS has adopted some, also Nintendo, cousing zoning control in response to some of these codes. And we will have to continue to work with our community, send a bigger voice to the state legislature. And again, through community inputs and discussions, to explore more options like overdies zones or see if you can purchase other lands and properties to build. Together, we'll come up with a plan so the state does it and to minimize the impact to our community and also protect our core value as a single, beautiful, single-family, as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant.
First, people like lived in San Marino. San Marino has always been more or less a single-family dwelling community. I understand that we do have a housing crisis, and the need for more affordable housing is needed. But I also believe that we can't build more houses for people by just cutting up the houses that already exist, or the neighborhoods that already exist. Ultimately, this has to be a topic that has to be addressed by the city council, but given to the people of San Marino to make that ultimate decision if we, if we see it prudent to turn, uh, large, large properties into smaller properties and, or even commercial properties such as apartments or condos. Uh, I don't believe any group, no group should have all that decision.
Thank you. You know, if I were running for office, I'd want to have a card where I could like not have to answer that question. Instead of like getting more, I'd just like, no, no. Tony, you're not going to say no. You're going to answer this question.
Sorry. Can you repeat it?
Yes, I sure may. Can I, can you find my glasses, Ron? The state of California has identified an existing shortage of housing stock, which is reflected in the housing elements that must be submitted by each city. SB nine was recently signed into law that allows homeowners to split lots and construct additional dwellings. As a member of the San Marino City Council, do you want to continue the fight towards San Marino maintaining a single-family identity or move to incorporate different types of housing and commercial activities?
Um, I guess the question is, what would I want? And to be honest, it's a state mandate. It doesn't really matter what you want. That's the rule. That's the game we're playing in. And so we have to come up with the right plans to figure out how to approach this. With all hanging for, you know, the ADUs obviously are a good start. Uh, I've been following the plans and the consultants that we've brought on. Um, but I would make it a priority to the council to really take a deep look at this and having one, two solutions or two realistic plans. I think sometimes, especially with neighboring cities who have seen this. Uh, they're paying money for consultants and kicking the can down the road. We need to, this is the game and we need to play it and resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
So the housing shortage is really a global issue. Um, it's been a problem with increasing global population for the past 20 years and it's only intensified by getting worse. Uh, here in the state of California, obviously a big problem, a big problem in cities. Um, I personally made the decision to move to San Marino because of its aesthetic beauty, because of the historic homes, because of the large parcels. Uh, I'm not really an advocate of, so I would probably work, or I definitely would work with the city council to maintain a single-family identity. But I do think that this is an issue that we have to, to work towards, increasing housing to some degree. We have young residents of San Marino that maybe can't afford these older homes and have large parcels. So, uh, I do believe there's work to be done, but I don't, I cannot advocate, uh, splitting up single-family residential properties into small lots because I also think with that, when you get into multifamily housing, you bring in transportation issues and things of that nature.
Thank you. Sue. Oh, is that the 30-second card?
My 30-second.
All right.
Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate the city council for making a terrific job on this issue and have done great work in establishing restrictive measures on this, uh, on related to Senate Bill nine and 10. Um, I'd like to share that I was like, more than 244 California cities voiced their opposition. 244 opposition against Senate Bill nine, along with the League of California Cities, an association that represents local governments. We are not alone. Los Angeles City Council came out in opposition to Senate Bill nine and 10. We do not need to appease. I believe there will be a path forward. Um, there's many arguments against SB nine and 10 by the United Neighbors. Um, it's called disenfranchisement, gentrification, destruction of single-family homes, homeownership, loss of local zoning controls, environmental planning, and public safety of traffic. Public safety and traffic issues. Real estate developers love this because they can still invent environmental planning in local communities. What I'm saying is that we should be working with other cities who are like-minded. There are four cities that are currently fighting against this. They're suing the state of California. One is Carson, for example, Whittier. And they believe that it's unconstitutional, it's an oversight authority that circumvents local planning. I'll be fighting.
I think she's heard the line of 30 seconds if she wants it. And we're on to Calvin, correct? Final question of the mandatory questions. Calvin, understanding the intrinsic relationship between San Marino's housing market and the performance of the community's public schools, explain any plans you might have to assure for the success of both entities, including the San Marino Unified School District's recent decline in enrollment. Calvin.
Yes, so, or to me, I always, like, I always advocate schools and city. Actually, we're, who are on the same board? You know, we all sing, we flow, we sing together. We should work closely. And I need full support of the school district, of course, and, and if I'm elected, and I'm elected, I would like to be the leader, to be able to work with school district, to get more things done for the greater goods of the community.
Thank you. Grant.
Well, um, the school, Unified School District is one of the things that makes San Marino like San Marino. Uh, that being said, the first thing that we need to do is do a cause analysis to find out exactly why attendance is falling off. Uh, while looking at the residential issues related to, uh, school attendance, it could be one of the causes. I don't believe it could be it's actually the, uh, main cause of the decline in attendance. So, uh, so really, I would work very closely with the school board and do a full, you know, investigation as to why, as to why, and how we can actually solve the issue.
Thank you. Tony.
Yeah, um, the school district and, uh, the city itself, obviously, we share, I would put it in business perspective. We share the same customers. Uh, and we both have different, uh, positive attributes. So I think the best way to kind of approach this would be to work with the council and the school board. You know, we could be together, joint committee, um, see what resources we could leverage, uh, which resources we put to work and create synergies with. Uh, I think that will be a mutually beneficial way of process. And we don't really know until we explore further in that personal interest contest. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
I'm going to ask you, please repeat the question, Mitch.
Yeah, sure will. I'm going to ask you to find my glasses. Understanding the intrinsic relationship between San Marino's housing market and the performance of the community's public schools, explain any plans you might have to assure for the success of both entities, including the San Marino Unified School District's recent decline in enrollment.
So schools, uh, school system is very important to me. My sister, who is 25 years old, the school teacher that exposed her mother, aged, age of 82, still works in the admin office that I went to school as a kid. Having said that, the schools are our future, right? Our kids are our future. Um, I can't really explain why there has been a decline in enrollment, possibly the aging of the population in our city. I do think it's critically important that city council and the school board really works hand in hand um, to, to foster, uh, our schools, you know, San Marino, the San Marino, San Marino City School District, uh, is one of the best in the country. And I think as a city council-elect, I would have to do everything in my power and make sure it stays that way and only gets better over time, despite of the declining enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue.
As a product of the San Marino School District, I, I believe that we need to be, and we need to start getting closer, go back to what it used to be, which is that we are in partnership. We are really one community, as these gentlemen have been saying. And, um, one of the things I'd like to see is that we share a lot of resources. And I'm going to give a small example and it doesn't, um, it doesn't define anything. But for example, our tennis courts, our community uses them. We could help, ask the city to help support the surfacing those tennis courts where their students use and the adults use. And these are sort of integrative approaches. But in addition to that, maybe we should start meeting together, which is we are aware of what the school district might be and they are aware of what we might be able to offer, um, from our end. So this is a, a path that we need to work towards and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen.
I wanted to say it's been a pleasure to work with the school district and the board, as well as the superintendent, um, presently. And there is a liaison role for two council members that work together, but the two council members from the school board on a monthly basis. And also, there are many, um, friend relationships, I think, that we have the school board members and that fosters our working together. The city does support the schools in several ways with through our bus fund. We get monies and we use them for school buses, for the teams and things like that. Also, obviously, our police and fire do a lot of work with the community. We also supply them with crossing guards, trash services. There's a number of ways. We're already partnering with the school district. And I think that we want to continue that. Um, as to the decline, I think that there's a universal decline across the board. And I will say to you, having empty homes, um, also impacts and adds to that decline, whether it's corporate or investors or otherwise, people that live here. So vote for the vacancy tax if you want to see the school enrollment go up.
I believe that's it correctly. We've, we've gone to all six, can't leave, right? Okay, beautiful. Now, we're going to some questions from the audience and we're going to start in the same order and start with Grant. Grant, the media is regularly, why don't I put my glasses on? This might help a little bit. The media is regularly taking, excuse me, the media is regularly talking about the Great Resignation, which refers to the current and ongoing economic trend in which employees are voluntary resigning from their jobs en masse, beginning in early 2021. This is happening all across the country in all industries. San Marino has not been immune to the movement. What role do you think the city council plays in attracting and retaining good employees? Grant.
Um, definitely, I would, yes, the Great Resignation is definitely an issue. I also, but it's also confusing because we also seen national numbers of, of greater employment, greater employment than what we've seen in the last, like, several decades. So when we say great resignation, I think we're also talking about great transition. So do, for, for issue of employee retention is definitely an outreach to the employee population in general to find out where are their satisfactions and what, what needs are we not meeting to, uh, meaning of theirs that we're not meeting. Uh, and pretty much go from there, you know, start listening, yeah, and adjusting, adjusting our, if necessarily the management style of the middle management to see, to make the workplace a great place to come every day.
Thank you. Tony.
Um, in response to this question, I think the way to view it is really how we view like early, uh, private companies, right? Our city, uh, maybe can help clarify what our mission statement is, what our intent, purpose, what our identity is. Maybe that's gotten lost just a little bit. Um, you know, the city staff and employees, they're here, you know, they're either here for money or because they care. Otherwise, they have many other options, right? That's kind of what I tell, you know, my friends and all that. If you're not, if you're not going to love where you're working, then just take the money. The, another reason I think a lot of this has been, uh, the recent activity has taken place is, uh, we have not necessarily updated, uh, the job descriptions to match what exactly each person is doing. Um, talking to some of the staff that have left, uh, they came here with the intent and knowledge of putting their careers and degrees to use, uh, where they weren't, you know, were surprised to find out that that was an instance. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
So the Great Resignation, I grew up in a different generation. I'm 56. Uh, you were happy to get your first job, you worked hard, you hoped for opportunity, and you moved on. Um, having said that, I do think this Great Resignation is beginning to shift a little bit with the shift in the economy. I think employers are beginning to call employees back to the offices. Having said that, I think, uh, as an employer, the city of San Marino, as it brings new people on board, needs to be very clear about what the job descriptions are, what's expected of the employees, and I think we need to be fair with the employees. Uh, but at the same time, I think employees are beginning to realize that inflation is not going away anytime too soon. We're in a, entering or are in a recessionary environment and I think people are beginning to begin, to feel a little more grateful for the work that they do have. So I think it's kind of a double-edged sword. I think employers have to, uh, listen and I think employees have to be a little bit more patient with their employers.
Thank you. Sue.
Um, well, we have a budget and our budget likely may need to be increased to increase, to have better salaries and benefits. If we have a problem with employee retention or attracting the right employees, we can do so by being more competitive than our neighbors. Now, we have other advantages because children of our employees can attend our great schools. We have that to offer. And in addition to that, we have a terrific community. We are actually, um, a great place to, to work. Our community is filled with terrific volunteers. Um, our touchpoints are, are kind and friendly. And in addition to that, I just want to say that it's really important from the top down that we, we support our employees and we encourage them and we see, we, we want to retain employees so that they want to stay here for many decades and we've had that experience. Clearly, we know how to do it and we should continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen.
Um, to put it in perspective, at our operating budget of about $29 million, which is for this coming year, or last year, excuse me, and this year will be a couple million dollars more, our employees make up $20 million of those expenses. So it is a significant part of our budget. We devote a lot of time to them. And I think the other parts are the personal parts that we need to respect, that the work that they do. We need to recognize those employees and there are many in this room today who do an outstanding job and go above and beyond. And those are the people, whether, um, they are here short-term and just came here and are already hitting the board running, or they've been in our community for five, 10, 20 years. And I think we need to show those people respect. I've always said our employees are a cut above and pay them fairly. We just finished labor negotiations and we are giving raises that reflect them and hopefully will both keep the ones that we have here who are excellent and also attract new people to come. We are down 10 positions, but we have hired a lot of people this year and are looking forward to new, um, and continuing employees.
Thank you. Calvin.
Yes, so for this, I really remember in one of my, uh, management class back in graduate school to discuss what, why people choose the job to be their career. To my surprise, pay is not number one. Actually, number one is feeling of achievement and being respected for what they do. Number two is actually relationship with their coworkers. Number three, job security. Number four, then is their pay. So to retain great employees that we have with our city, of course, we have to increase the, uh, morale for the employment, uh, the employee morals by listening to them, supporting them, and, you know, in other words, make San Marino the happiest place to work on earth. That's, thank you.
I think Disneyland already has that copyrighted in some way, but it's a very good thought. What's that, did you say?
Safety.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Okay, that finishes that question, I believe. The city of San Marino has experienced a 160% increase in residential burglaries over the past year. As a member of the San Marino City Council, what would you do to reverse this disturbing trend in crimes against our citizens that would not include hiring additional police officers? Tony.
Yeah, it's unfortunate crimes increasing like that and it's increasing like that everywhere. Um, obviously, safety, I mean, our, our police, I mean, the police environment doing an amazing job. I mean, we see the stats, the crime, the data points, the crime goes down. Um, well, crime's not increasing, the crime's going down. Um, the vacancies, uh, the neighborhood, I mean, it kind of circles back to this being a small-town neighborhood. Um, and everyone kind of being, having a sense of ownership. I think everyone really taking pride in their homes, having a sense of ownership, um, taking the time to, to communicate with their neighbors. I think a lot of that is prevention there and everything else. Um, our, our police force has really, uh, done amazing. So that's how I would kind of view it, is kind of embracing the neighborhood community vibe and amplifying that with, uh, you know, block parties and small events. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
So as the son of a retired police officer who served for 25 years in New York, um, I'm a huge advocate of our men and women in blue, as well as the fire department. Having said that, as a newer resident to the city of San Marino, I have become a little alarmed at the increased rate of burglaries. As a matter of fact, last Saturday evening, the neighbor directly behind me, uh, their home was broken into while they were not home. Uh, the home was alarm-secured, uh, and they just broke a window and broke into it. So I think we need to work, uh, very closely with our law enforcement. I think we need to establish a stronger.
I think we need to establish stronger neighborhood watch communities. I think communication among neighbors is very important. I know in my going door-to-door and knocking for my city council nomination that I have been making people aware of what happened to my neighbor last week, just keeping people informed. I think, you know, if we band together as a city of residences and form alliances to make sure that we try to keep the crime rate as low as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
Thank you. Well said. I think one of the nicest things we can see is the pride in service on our patrol cars. We love seeing our San Marino Police Department. I spoke in our—as we stroll around the neighborhood. As—I spoke recently to Chief John Encantro, and one of the things he shared with me that we could do—the most—one of the most important things is what Stephen just mentioned, neighborhood watches. That would significantly affect—help our issues that we are experiencing. But I also came across some things I learned recently, that we could register our video surveillance within the city, and that could be used as a way for preventive measures. Pasadena has a citizens' police academy that possibly, as part of our neighborhood watch program, that we could participate in. And of course, we are now including our—we have just, I think, almost finished motorcycle training, and so our police officers will be more readily available and seen throughout the city. So thank you very much. I think there are many paths we can take.
Thank you. Gretchen?
I think that we have an outstanding police department, and the burglary issue, first of all, has to do with the vacant homes in our neighborhoods, as well as—I'm just saying, you know what to vote for, people. And also, there are increased people coming from out of town, and I think that our police department works hard to arrest them, and they arrive promptly oftentimes. However, we have an issue as well with the L.A. Prosecutor's Office, that they often let criminals go when it depends on the items and the level of the crime they don't prosecute. So I would advocate that we also—in addition to the neighborhood watch, which I think can be revived in areas that it's since been quiet, and I know the community outreach of the police department does do meetings, and I would like to see that spread further. But also to work with the prosecutor's office to make sure, when the arrests are made, that they're prosecuted to the fullest and they get full sentences. And I do think that's a problem right now that we have that needs our attention as city council.
You know, I forgot I was giving this bell when people hit the limit, so I want to ring it at least one time. Gretchen, I'm ringing the bell on you.
Okay.
Calvin?
All right, so I think San Marino's relatively a very safe city. Of course, our goal is zero burglaries. And for that, we'll continue to support our wonderful police and fire department to ensure they have the best technology equipment, so they can do—the continue to do the great job providing great service to us. And as I know—as we all know, we have notifications like NISO, and we also—you should utilize some free apps like Nextdoor or Ring and revive—of course, revitalize neighborhood watch program, or some cities that I witnessed, they have Citizens Patrol or Police Ambassador Program in Berkeley that I witnessed. So, and as our police chief always tell everyone, we should practice, see something, say something. By doing those, actually, I was told criminal mentality is when it's easy, quick, and low-risk, they will do it. So by doing all those, we receive—we reverse the criminal mentalities and to ensure public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant? Oh, here we go again, the 30-second card.
Okay, so I stand on a platform of strong support for San Marino Police Department and Fire Department. The way I see it is quite simple, that criminals must be given the message that if they come in the city and they do bad, they will be caught. That being said, the way that I was suggesting accomplishing this is twofold. One, creating more watch points at the major entries of the city. This—I noticed the city is mostly watched during the daytime when traffic is heavy and it's hard to discern. The people just using the streets for regular transportation are those that are casing the neighborhood. So, if we can set up a system, we can identify vehicles by license plate and vehicle description as they enter the city, that is more data for the detectives to use to pinpoint what vehicle and who was involved. Also, the citizenry has to be involved. I would also promote a strong relationship between the people, the neighbors, the citizens. This is your home. You are involved in the safety of your home and your neighbor's home. You are not just—you're a single family in your home, and you just care about yourself because you have a no mark. So, if you see it, report it, text it, email, put it on social media. We also would also create those platforms so for that kind of reporting.
I ask you all to thank—to join me in thanking our police chief, John Encantro, our fire chief, Mario Rueda, and I saw several officers and firefighters. And I think Stephen is next, is that correct? No? Tony? Who is it? Stephen? Okay.
I have the same question, is there any?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Next question, okay. Three years ago, the city of San Marino was offered funding under Los Angeles County's Measure R to improve the flow of local transportation. Do you believe the city of San Marino should apply for and receive money from outside government agencies? Stephen?
I don't take issue with San Marino receiving outside funds, depending upon what the cause is. As far as public transportation, if it were to be taken for, say, the—the public transportation rolling down Huntington Huntington Avenue, I certainly would not be an advocate of it at all. So it depends on what the issue really is, but I don't see any issues in San—the city of San Marino working with other local agencies for funding.
Sue?
Concerning Measure R, I think recently, the Board of Directors made a motion to—to provide greater flexibility in how those monies can be used. And those monies can be used for adding bus, bicycle, and pedestrian safety projects. I think we should evaluate what are the strings associated with getting these sorts of monies, but if we can get the monies and we feel that we will not be put upon to provide any other kind of services, I think we should definitely look into that so that we can—we can use our resources or in the general funds in other ways.
Thank you. Gretchen?
I agree that we took the right action the first time because the funds were tied to actually facilitating the movement of traffic through our city. However, as Sue said, there has been—all of the money is not expensed or committed to projects, and so I believe that we need to revisit what funds we could get and put them toward other things that are related to traffic, such as pedestrian and safety, bicycle safety, particularly around our schools, where we have a lot of issues, because Huntington Drive, all the schools in our town, as you all probably know, are right on very busy streets. And during pickup and drop-off time, that becomes a reason for accidents, and I think that the funds could be used in those respects without doing major changes to Huntington Drive that would affect traffic or bring more traffic to our community, which we don't want. So I'm hoping that will be looked at and considered. Only do that for me, I'm going to say. I'm looking at red.
You're the only one who gets a red card!
No, no, no!
No, no, we have a couple close as well, thank you. All right, Calvin?
Yes, so I also agree with what Gretchen said, and I stand—the first time when the Measure R money was offered to San Marino, it was restricted to certain uses, of course, regarding traffic, including the coordinated traffic signals and so on and so forth. But now, as the use for the funds widening up, I—of course, in support of getting—getting—getting as much as we can, so we can use another facility to better our community, that I'm totally in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant?
Yes, um, my stance on infrastructure is threefold. I like to see a priority in power, water, and roads. So, I would definitely see a lot of the internal budget being devoted to our roads as we see them. That being said, we would also need to look at—if we wanted to look at outside of funding or donations, well, no funding, we also have to say, yes, again, what strings are attached? Because when we accept money from other entities, we also have to accept their rules for using that money. So if they do not line up with what we believe we want at San Marino, then, no, we would not—then I would say, no, not to take—take the additional funding. And conversely, if they do, then, yes, to use—to cooperate with outside funding as we see fit.
Yeah, I—in terms of outside funding, I think it's important that we actually even be proactive to look for outside funding. I know we're talking about Measure R in this specific instance, but for a city like this with a single revenue source essentially, there should be no reason for us not to look outside. But given, obviously, with Measure R and other instances, there will be strings attached, there will be different conditions, but it's just like we do when we look at, you know, biotech companies. Why would you not take a grant if it's there for you to discover? So in terms of outside funding, I think it's something we should always constantly be exploring.
Thank you. Stephen, did you start this question?
I did, yes.
You did, thank you. Okay, so we go to Sue. Sue? Jeez. Yeah, thank you, Steve. Laugh a little louder, please. Do you support the San Marino Center renovation, and if so, why?
I support the San Marino Center renovation. I think it—it has been a—it's been neglected, and it's time to do a refresh. I would say I was absolutely support a modest refresh of the San Marino Center, and I applaud—I applaud the two council members who voted no on going forward with I consider to be overly large plans. And I'll give you a small example. I looked—I went into the city, and I looked at the plans for the center, and one thing that—that struck me and kind of bothered me was that although the site is—we are—we are remodeling, it was used for a—for banquets and—and wedding parties. I had my second wedding reception there at that San Marino Center, by the way, 25 years ago. The catering kitchen clearly says it's not a cooking kitchen, so no cooking is allowed. And I've spoken to some caterers, and there's no way for them to keep their food warm. So I do believe that we need to take a second look at this, and—and I would like to see the city center refurbished. I just wanted to pause. Thank you.
Gretchen?
I am in favor of renovating, repairing, bringing up to date remediation from asbestos and lead, and our wiring correcting issues of support, and generally improving the building so that it can be useful to our community. I have been opposed, once the project grew beyond those things, to changing rooms and adding outside spaces, I—and shifting things around, as well as the cost became prohibitive, and I had a problem with the—not going to an outside estimator during this different parts of the project when things were being considered, so that we're spending the money responsibly. I mean, I believe our fiduciary responsibility to the community is foremost, and we need to spend money wisely, especially on a project like this, which was not, in the end, what came to the vote of the rest of the council.
Thank you. Calvin?
Yes, actually, it actually—it was my pleasure and a great learning experience to serve as a member of the tax force of the San Marino Center project. Of course, I'm in total support of the renovation. San Marino Center has a lot of different maintenance and—and safety issues. Co—co—we need to bring—a lot of code needs to be up to date, so there's no liability in safety issues. And most importantly of all, the highest and best use of the property, of course, is a community center that the property was originally designed for. And so I'm so—I'm very glad that it has been—being able to be renovated back, you know, so can be used as a community center again for our—for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, I may. Do you support the San Marino Center renovation? If so, why?
Yes, I am in support of the renovation, as long as—as long as we promise that the city center is a gathering place for San Marino community. I support any objective to bring the community together. To put it very flowery, the future is bright, but we can only gather together. So, if a center like this is what's needed, then I would vote for it. I would support it.
Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, from my perspective, I'd support what is already taking place, I think, tomorrow, right? Groundbreaking in the San Marino Center. I think it's going to become a long-term valuable asset to the city and to the—to the residents, and I don't think any of us can argue that it's not an improvement on what was there before. Having gone through the same process with the Chinese Club, the five years I was there, we went through the same process. We were going to demolish and rebuild the building, rethought it, reiterate it, and then, you know, I don't know if—we've been fortunate enough to see the building. We did a light—somewhat light renovation, and now it's become a great gathering space for some city organizations, school organizations. We host events all the time there, and it's a great gathering place for just even our small community there.
Thank you. Stephen?
So, as a man who has spent the past 11 years of my life renovating homes of historic nature, it's one of my passions. So, anything that is in need of renovation, I am in support of. So, yes, I would be in support of restoring the San Marino City Center. Having said that, I'm also mindful of budgeting. So, to the extent, you know, I think that place would need to be made safe for residents, welcoming for residents, a place where people want to come and gather and use for whatever purposes, but it would also have to be done within a reasonable budget, because I do know that renovation budgets can really run away from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, did you start this question? I believe—yes, you did, okay. So Gretchen, I believe. Gretchen, there is a small vocal group in San Marino that is always against everything. Everything is in all caps. They complain about every attempt to improve our city. How do you propose keeping their minority opinion from drawing out—drowning out the wishes of the majority, so that city government can meet the needs of all—underlined—its citizens? Gretchen?
I—that's a very broad question in a lot of ways. I think that there are community members who are concerned about finances. I think that there are also community members that are greatly concerned about public safety, as well as a myriad of other issues. And I think that it's important for all of us on council, should—whomever may be elected, to listen to all community members, including the vocal minority that does not want money spent, and try to figure out why and how that can—how they can be assuaged to support a project. And also, that says to me that people prioritize fiduciary and fiscal prudence, which I think I have done in my last five years, and I think that's always a way is to also always consider the costs upfront for doing anything in the city, and what is the return on that investment for all residents, not just the advocating portion or the negative portion.
Thank you. You know, I read this again. I noticed that a lot of the words have, like, semi-French spellings. I'm concerned that it was Kelly Ryan who wrote this question, but I'm not sure. Calvin?
So, to me, I think all the voices are legit, you know, no matter what they're—no matter they're very conservative or they're more open to accepting things. But, again, San Marino shouldn't be San Marino. So, to encourage more—it always to be heard, I think we have to encourage involvement. So more—more people will be participating in a lot of city decisions, and their voice can be heard. And again, I—I do understand a lot of financial concerns, and—but rate of return of city investment and property shouldn't be just measured by dollar amount. It should be measured by the general welfare, safety, the well-being of our residents, the happiness, or even the future development of the city. All these messages should be conveyed to all the residents in our town to make the best decisions for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant?
Yes, I think that this is a golden opportunity to expand how we communicate or address issues. In order to quell the—not really quell the voices of a vocal minority, is to empower the voices of the silent majority, give them the opportunity to actually speak beyond, say, city council meeting forums or what have you. I would—if—in charge, I would create something like a San Marino Social, an online forum for San Marino residents who would be identified— forum for San Marino residents who would be identified by name and, you know, their identity confirmed to speak, to speak on electronic forums about what they feel and what they actually individually want. That therefore giving everybody the maximum opportunity to say what they want.
Thank you. Sounds like study hall that out here. Tony?
Sorry, can you repeat it?
Yes, I can. Do I have to add the?
All caps?
There is a small vocal group in San Marino that is always against everything. They complain about every attempt to improve our city. How do you propose keeping their minority opinion from drowning out the wishes of the majority so that city government can meet the needs of all its citizens?
Good. No, I, I think it's good that they're vocal, right? I, I think the city, city council, city staff has been doing it these past couple years, pushing out transparency, pushing out information so people feel like it's more welcoming, they, they understand more what's going on, so they feel more comfortable to be engaging in the community. I think that's the steps we need to take. We need to keep, you know, reaching out, opening up different communication channels. And I think us being here is proof of that, you know, we're getting a diverse look of voices that aren't always heard. And so it's kind of on us to try to, you know, uplift what Grant said, the silent majority out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
So at the end of the day, I think we can all agree that we're very blessed and fortunate to live in the city of San Marino. I personally feel very humbled to live in such a beautiful community. The experience of going door-to-door knocking and listening to people, introducing myself has been a very rewarding experience for me. I've heard some complaints, but on the whole, I've heard a lot of positive statements and a lot of positive attributes from people about the city. I think all voices need to be heard. I think as a city council member, that's our, one of our foremost responsibilities is to hear all voices and try to also realize the fact that a lot of communities are faced with an aging population and then we have younger families moving in, different ideologies, different needs and wants. What a younger family might want out of the school district is not what an older family might want. So I think we need to be mindful of just listening and as a city council member, doing the best that we can to represent all citizens and just, you know, keep this community safe and, and as beautiful as it is today.
Sue?
Passion is great. It's that, it's passion that brought six of us here today to run for city council. But we are not, we are not a business and we shouldn't be running, a city should not run like a business. The city exists to provide services to its residents. And if you, if you, if you think like a business, you're not going to be looking at how do I get dial-a-ride in place so I can get, you know, grandma to senior yoga or to the various events and speakers that we have in our library and all these things. I met this man the other day who came to our friend's, friend's library shop that we sell used books. And he came in on bus from South Pasadena to volunteer at our library. So it is volunteerism, it's our, it's our spirit of our community. We are not a business, we're here to serve our residents and the community at large. Thank you so much.
Just for fun. Calvin, are, were Calvin correct? Is that right to start the next question? I believe. Calvin, what strategic detailed goals do you have and how will you implement them? Calvin?
Implement?
What strategic detailed goals do you have and how will you implement them?
Us in, us in, in what, Calvin, or just, just in general?
To be a city councilman, what goals and strategic ideas do you have for the city?
I see. Of course, my ideology is always to preserve the core values we have, of course, and invest in, in the growth, future growth of our city. My, well, my past experience in involvement, well, always, well, it taught me how to work with others, listen to others, to come up with the best plan and to ensure they're, they're done. People ask me about the definition of leadership. I always answer them, my answer of the, the leadership, the definition of leadership is always, well, I don't have to be the smartest, but a great leader is only as good as the people around them. So by listening to others, closely work with everyone, come up with the best plan and the leader set the vision and make sure everybody can work in harmony, together to, be on the direction we all agree on. That will be my strategy on all the policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant?
Yes, three things. Safety, school, and infrastructure. Through safety, the reduction of crime would be through the direct support of the San Marino Police Department and Fire Department. Schools will definitely be a strong root, first root cause analysis as to why we're having a shrinking attendance rate and to give whatever support to, once the root causes are found, to solve, to, to give, give money to those solutions to raise up the attendance rate. And infrastructure, power, water, and roads. We make sure that our power grid is strong and up to date, our water system can support all our drinking needs and also making the roads passable, very clean for daily commute.
Tony?
Strategically, I think my first approach would be to help improve the user experience for the residents. I think there's a lot of things that are minor but convolute the process, whether it's related to house or personal issues. Coming into the city, you come in and you, you know, you, you ask questions. I think technology can help enable a lot of this to be a lot easier. And then adding that with the city pushing external communication, letting residents know this is clearly where you find this, this is where you can find that information. Saves time on both aspects and it just improves the experience. So the, then, you know, people are going to enjoy being here more and they're going to enjoy and feel more comfortable coming in and discussing issues with us as well.
Thank you. Stephen?
So I think my number one objective would be really to continue to ensure that our city remains safe. Working very closely, as I mentioned earlier, with the police, law enforcement, establishing neighborhood watch communities. I think we all want to know that we can sleep peacefully at night and our public safety is foremost. Secondly, I think as a newer resident who just is almost at the completion of remodeling a home, I think streamlining some of the processes, permitting processes, processes of the DRC as well as the Planning Commission, streamlining some of those processes, making it a little bit easier for homeowners to remodel their properties without sacrificing the beautiful historic nature of their homes. And thirdly, to Grant's point, the infrastructure, making, making sure that our roadways, our sidewalks, our public parks, our public spaces are kept very clean and pristine and that we don't start to experience issues that other surrounding cities are experiencing with vagrancy and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
I, I think I'm, there, there's a few items here and I think we've all pretty much discussed it, but one of the, one of the important ones for me is to ensure that we remain a single-family community. And I think we need to reach out to those cities that are, who are like-minded and want to preserve their unique culture and feel of their cities, such as the League of the California, League of California Cities or, or the United Neighborhoods. In addition to that, I would like to see our business districts revitalized. I think the economic development team has done a terrific job with the Mission District and because of the COVID and the shutdowns, that sort of came to halt. I'd like to see that group sort of recommissioned and look to see what we can do in the various quarters along Huntington Drive, each of which has a different feel. And of course, I want to ensure that we have safe communities and that we work with our, our first responders to ensure that we can continue to be what we are today.
Gretchen?
All right. As everybody else has said, obviously, public safety is a top priority. I think that's what city council members need to focus on first in terms of protecting our community and doing the best. So I'd like to work in partnership with our chief, chiefs, excuse me, both Thoreda and Encanto, see what they need and encourage them and their excellent staff, officers, to continue working toward that and prosecute and do the things that we outlined before. Also, I think that we need to carefully manage the housing element process and also the rollout of some of the state mandates that we continue to get even this year. We have additional ones that have to do with dividing and changing our single-family residential neighborhoods. I think those are a unique character to the city that brought all of us here, make our community family-friendly, so I think it has to be done in absolutely the best way. Also, I would like to see us reach out to local businesses and see what it takes to revitalize particularly this area nearby on Huntington Drive.
Thank you. Calvin, did you start this question? Did you, did you?
I started with.
You started? Okay. So in the, in the interest of expediency, we're going to our closing statements now. For those of you who did not get a chance to have your question answered, I encourage you to meet with the candidates individually if you like, host a coffee for them so you can find out the, the answers to your individual questions. So two minutes for our closing statements. Calvin, you will start and then we'll go the other direction. Are you prepared, Calvin, to go? Okay, great. Closing statements, two minutes. Calvin Low.
Thank you, Mitch. Again, I want to thank the San Marino City Club and all of you here tonight for the great opportunity to speak with you. I believe that in order to be a successful representative of a community, one needs to find passion in getting involved. To me, it means actively seeking our experiences that allow you to pour your personal effort into your community. I draw my leadership and organizational experience from a diverse background of positions that have helped me develop thoughtful perspective on teamwork, management, and goal setting. My years of volunteering in schools and community organizations as well as city and county government committees have given me a deep understanding, understanding of the needs of our residents and how to work successfully to meet those needs. All this experience has, has prepared me for the next level of community service as a member of the city council. I want to preserve San Marino's heritage, ensure public safety, maintain healthy city finances, improve infrastructure and city assets, optimize technology, and provide premium services to our residents. I pledge to work hard and listen to our residents, collaborate with other members of the city council to plan for the future wisely and to make San Marino an even more exceptional place to live and of course continue the beautiful San Marino, San Marino story that we are all so proud to tell. With that, I hope to have the honor and privilege to serve you as a member of the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gretchen Shepherd-Ramie?
Thank you. I hope to be re-elected. I hope that our community has known that I have worked tirelessly on everybody's behalf over the past five years to reach the right results as issues were presented to us and also lead our community in decision-making for those areas that we had before us and will continue to have, such as Stoneman, which we discussed earlier tonight. I think you, community needs transparency and honesty as well as some common sense when we're making decisions. And it reminds me of the Lacy Park bathroom and how the new council members came in and the three of us tried to focus on that project and bring it down to a more reasonable expense and get it done cheaper for the city to benefit all the residents. And I would like to see that continue. That will be my pledge to you, is to approach things logically, work to get the best result for all the residents, as well as spend my time and energy speaking with residents. I always have an open door, an opening email communication, and I see people around town. And so I'd like to advocate for your needs and try to make those come to fruition. In the next four years, we have some complex issues. We will be upside down budget-wise because of our pension obligations and I think we have to keep that in the forefront. And that also compels me to be more financially prudent than I would like to be and build everything that everybody desires. But we do have four years ahead of us that are going to be problematic. I believe that I have knowledge and I know both from my skills that I have as an attorney as well as the four year, five years now, almost five years, a lot of information about the issues that are going to confront us. And I can approach those in an educated, knowledgeable fashion and get the best result for our residents and continue to enhance our community so that it's wonderful, we bring more families here and more people stay. So thank you.
You know, I was a big fan of the Gong Show growing up. I was wondering if we could get a big Gong for the, the school board forum. And I wonder, can I use this bell and keep this at home for when I talk to Steve Todd on the phone? I could just, that'd also be very nice. I lost my train of thought. Where are we here? There we go. Sue?
Thank you, City Club, for hosting this forum and, and our moderator, Mitch. It's been a pleasure. I'd like to recognize my fellow candidates who, like me, wish to serve San Marino and its residents. And I'd like to thank our residents who take an active role in making San Marino a jewel in California's crown. If you choose to support me for city council, let me assure you that I will fight to preserve the legacy that has been entrusted to us. We are a single-family residence, full stop. I will fight outside interference to our city affairs. I will be physically conservative and I know that unlike a for-profit business, we are here to serve our residents, both young and especially our growing retired and senior community, which is about 20% of our residents. And very importantly, I stand 100% with our first responders, our first-rate police and fire department, and I'm grateful for all that they did during our shutdowns and thereafter. Their kindness and dedication is the reason why San Marino is, is so special. I will work to support the needs of San Marino businesses who choose to operate in our city and work to attract the right businesses who wish to serve our community. I will engage city management to create a working environment where our city employees feel supported and appreciated. As a council member, I believe it's important to stand alongside and support our prized San Marino School District. We need to involve, evolve into a livable community where we raise our families, engage with our neighbors while getting a bite to eat, and retire and feel safe here. I would like to thank my wonderful husband, Jerry Guba, and my son, Jagim, and my friends and family for their love and encouragement in this journey. I appreciate your support on November 8th. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Gretchen, I'm, I'm glad you brought something up, Gretchen, a couple of seconds ago. Marcella, I understand, is tomorrow the groundbreaking for Stoneman, or I'm sorry, San Marino Center? I understand you guys opened up the time capsule at the San Marino Center and inside of it you found a Lacy Park restroom. Is that correct? Stephen, you're next? Stephen Jones?
Yes, so does this go the other way, 30 seconds less?
I don't, yeah. If it were up to me, it would, yeah.
So I would like to thank the City Club for putting this together this evening as well as the residents who came out to participate. This has been a very rewarding and humbling experience for me to come up here as a potential future city council member and express to you my concerns, my thoughts, and my perspectives as a resident of the city of San Marino. I think at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We love our city, we want to preserve it, we want to protect it, we want to keep it safe, we want to keep our residents safe, we want to hear all of everybody's voice. I do, being a businessman, I do think that the city needs to be run in some fashion as a business. I think we need to be very mindful of budgets. I think we need to prioritize. I, I know there are a lot of critical issues facing the city and that will always be the case. I think we have younger families, again, that we have to, you know, I've spoken to a lot of younger families and what their issues are and what their concerns are, and they really do vary from some of the families that have been here for 20 or 30 years. I do know that being a newer resident to the city of San Marino, that might be a concern for people and, you know, he hasn't been around long enough, but I do have a lot of experience in my 35-year almost career, 23 years on Wall Street and 11-plus years running my own businesses. I have grit, I have empathy, and I'm a hard worker. I come from a very humble background. My father served his community, as I mentioned earlier, for 25 years as a police officer. I am very, very passionate about law enforcement and I just hope that you can put your faith in a little bit of the new guy, mixed in with some of the people I've been around here for a little bit, for some time as resident, long-term resident, and you mix a little bit of new with the old and you'll probably get a very... bit of new with the old, and you'll probably get a very rewarding experience. I can convince you of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Tony Cho?
So I also want to thank everybody in attendance for taking the time to come out here, and my fellow candidates here for, you know, throwing the hat in to try to make a difference, add different voices to the, the crowd. I, you know, I, you've kind of heard earlier, everyone kind of reiterated the same, it's a gem of a city, we're all very thankful to be here. I just wish to be part of that process. I'm happy to be a potential, to potentially have an opportunity to contribute here. Looking at the last two years, there's been more transactions in the last two years than the previous five years, which means there's a big difference, a big shift in demographics and, and maybe needs and wants, and so I hope to be that bridge to kind of bridge the past and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I announced Tony's volleyball games. It's nice to listen to you instead of talking the whole time. Grant, and I want to make sure I print, Grant Fujiwara. I hope, I hope you have one for everybody.
Sorry about that. All right, I've been living in San Marino for 44 years, and during that time, I've seen what makes San Marino great. Duty, social self-consciousness, and charity to your, our fellow man and neighbor. Some people describe themselves as grassroots Americans. I describe myself as a grassroots son of San Marino. That being said, I pledge to you that I will stand firm on my platform to support the Police Department and the Fire Department to bring down the crime rate in the city. I will work very diligently with the school system to help them build up, build up that attendance rate in any manner that we, that is fit and within a budgetary limit. And to also support a very strong infrastructure that will last into the future. I will use my multiple years working in corporate quality for medical devices and pharmaceutical products to do fantastic root cause analysis, problem solving. The one thing we always ask first, whenever presented a problem, we always ask, what is the risk? And I will do no different here. When we're presented a problem, the first, first thing we will always ask is, what is the risk? And approach, and solve every issue based on those risks. Thank you for giving me the timing to, the opportunity to speak to you. Now it's your turn. Speak to me. Tell me what you guys are observing. What are your individual wants and needs? And I will listen, and I will, in, in my mind, I will also try to think of ways to help and balance it out so that everybody in the community can benefit.
Thank you. I think we have six excellent candidates for city council this year. Thank you. Marcelo, tomorrow is the groundbreaking right here at the San Marino Center. Is that correct? What time? 9:00 AM. Hope to see you all here. Refreshments, I hope? Absolutely, of course. It wouldn't be a San Marino event without refreshments. Hope to see you all tomorrow. Thank you all very much. Great job. Very much enjoyed this. Good luck to you all and the, and vote on October 7th, right? November 8th. Vote. Thank you. Oh, Isaac's got his hand up.
Next week.
Next week. Oh, that's right. Next Wednesday, which the date is what? Who can help me with the dates? The 5th of October? It's not a voting day, right? That's November. The school board candidates forum right here. So we hope to see you all next week at 7 o'clock for the school board candidates forum. Joseph, are you part of that? How about that? That's worth the price of admission alone. Of course, there is no price of admission, but it's always good to see Joseph. Yes, Shelley is in, Shelley as well. That's right. Okay, we're done? Thank you. Good night. Good luck.[1794.36][1794.36]